Good evening, the Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, January 13, 2020 will please come to order, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Lynda Cohen.
Yes, here.
Andrea Keen.
Here.
Bonita Lucky.
Here.
Cian Falconer.
Here.
Cheryl Polzin.
Here.
Chris McCullough here. Sarah Johansson.
Here.
And Chase Anderson.
Here.
All right, we are all here and accounted for. Happy New Year, everyone, and it's good to be back at the board table, and it's so fun to see the room filled with so many students and family members. As it is a new year, there are a number of items on our agenda that are organizational in nature, and first is the oath of office, and so I'm going to ask that our newly elected board members will please join me down at the podium. Okay, here we go. If you all want to line up, that looks well, too. All right. "It is an honor to be elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you receive the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of the school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for our public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, you must be accountable to the community, you must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, you serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, you must strive to work together and with the staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision you have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development." I now ask Dr. Lynda Cohen, Ms. Cheryl Polzin, Bonita Lucky, and Cian Falconer to each come to the podium and recite the oath of office.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 284, in the best of my judgment and ability.
I affirm that I, Cheryl Polzin, will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District 284, to the best of my judgment and ability.
I affirm that I, Bonita Lucky, will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District 284, to the best of my judgment and ability.
I affirm that I, Cian Falconer, will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District 284, to the best of my judgment and ability.
How about a round of applause? Andrew, do you want to get a picture of all, or do family members want to get any other pictures? Are we good? Okay? Yes, up there, sounds good.
No, we duck out.
That was fun, and I would like to once again welcome Cian Falconer to the school board. It is so great to have you here.
Excited to be here.
So, and we have one more organizational piece of business that we need to do, and that is the election of officers. At the December 2, 2019 Special Work Session, the school board reviewed the officer slate. Individual board members expressed their interest in serving as officers in 2020, and a proposed slate of officers for the year was created. We will now call for the election of the board chair, vice chair, clerk, and treasurer. Is there a nomination for board chair?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Andrea Keen for chair, please.
Andrea Keen has been nominated as chair. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? I think I have to say this three times. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving Andrea Keen as the new Wayzata School Board Chair? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Abstention. Motion carries. Next, we'll call for the election of the board vice chair. Is there a nomination?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Lynda Cohen as vice chair.
All right. Lynda Cohen has been nominated as vice chair. Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Any discussion? This is for the nomination of Lynda Cohen as vice chair. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of approving Lynda Cohen as vice chair of the Wayzata School Board in 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Abstention. Motion carries. Next, we'll call for a nomination for the clerk.
Madam Chair, I nominate Bonita Lucky for board clerk, and I so move.
All right, Bonita Lucky has been nominated as the clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding Bonita Lucky as clerk? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of approving Bonita Lucky as clerk of the Wayzata School Board for 2020? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstention. Motion carries. Finally, we'll call for the election for the board treasurer.
I would like to nominate Madam Chair, you, Sarah Johansson, as board treasurer, and I so move.
All right, Sarah Johansson.
I second.
All right. Any discussion regarding Sarah Johansson as board treasurer? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of approving Sarah Johansson as board treasurer for 2020? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstention. Motion carries. All right, congratulations to our new board officers. I would also like to, just for a moment before we do a quick switch of the gavel and the chair, I'd like to thank everyone who served as an officer in 2019, and thanks to everyone who served on the board this past school year. And, one more thing, I would like to thank the board and the administration and the community for allowing me to be chair for the past two years. It has truly been an honor and a lot of fun and a privilege to serve our community, and I am grateful for the trust and confidence that you ensured in me. As a parent in this district and a board member, I feel very lucky, and I am proud to be a member of this Wayzata community, so thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to give up the gavel and move my chair to our very skilled and wonderful new chair, Andrea Keen.
Well, as my first order of business, I'd like to acknowledge the outstanding leadership provided by Sarah Johansson for the last two years. We've had many accomplishments as a district and as a school board. I think it's safe to say that I speak for all of my colleagues in thanking Sarah for her committed leadership and her diligent attention to what's best for all the students in Wayzata Public Schools. Please join me in a round of applause to thank Sarah Johansson. Okay, now we'll resume our formal meeting agenda, and our first order of business is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the board meeting materials, and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items as presented. Could I get a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, and to our brand-new clerk, I believe this is a roll call vote.
Yes, it's a roll call vote.
Thank you, Bonita.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin?
Yes.
Lynda Cohen?
Yes.
Cian Falconer?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky? Yes. And Andrea Keen?
Yes. So the motion carries, and we have an agenda. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have reports from organizations, and we have one report this evening. It's my pleasure to welcome our Wayzata High School Student Council Representative Matt Lawrence. Thanks for being here, Matt.
Hi, my name is Matt, and I'm the senior vice president at Wayzata. I'll just be recapping some events and highlighting some other school events as well. So just for some general school news, we had a smooth transition into the 2020 school year, and we are now close to wrapping up the semester, next week being the final week of the term. So for activity news, for student council, we're kind of in a transition period. We're not doing much right now, but we're beginning our planning on the further events of the year. The Fusion Leadership Circle will be attending a retreat at the end of this month. For the National Honor Society, they are busy planning Snow Days, which is coming up the first week of February. It will include theme days, the Winter Dance, and other events. Youth and Government had one of their big events this last weekend. Students had a great time at the state Capitol, acting as members of the government. Now for some fine arts news, in the band department, last Thursday, the Wind Ensemble played with eighth graders from West. This Thursday will be similar, with concerts being held at Central and at the high school. Both these concerts will also be combined performances with the eighth graders. In the theater department, the Winter Black Box Performance will take place this Friday and Saturday. Now moving on to some sports news, congratulations to the wrestling team for their championship at the Elk River Tournament. On Thursday, Girls Alpine placed fourth overall, and Boys Alpine placed third. Girls Hockey beat Centennial 5-1 on Saturday. Boys Hockey beat Buffalo on Saturday at the Lake Conference matchup. Girls Basketball played, beat Eden Prairie, while Boys Basketball lost Eden Prairie on Saturday. The Gymnastics Team won the Moorhead Invite with a season-high score of 145.8. That is all I have for school news. Does the board have any questions for me?
Thank you, Matt. Any questions or comments for Matt? Can you believe your senior year is almost halfway over?
Oh, it's crazy.
Well, thanks for being here.
All right, thank you.
We know how busy you are.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, do we have any other reports from organizations? No? All right. Moving on, we get to tackle the very best part of our agenda, and that is recognitions. I can see that we have several recognitions tonight. They are one of the highlights of our role as a school board. Welcome, everyone. Superintendent Anderson, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. My name is Chase Anderson. I'm the superintendent for the school district, and it's great to welcome all of you here tonight. We have a full house, which is always awesome when we have a number of recognitions and exciting things that are happening tonight. Before we start with that, though, I would just like to congratulate our recently and instated school board members. And Cian, welcome to the school board. And it's real exciting for us to start this new calendar year with a new school board member, and welcoming back three that have been with us for previous terms. So for the young people in the audience, if you want to be a superintendent someday, you get to have seven bosses, great bosses like I have. And I appreciate so much all the work that you do. Our first recognition this evening is for a number of retirements. We always start out with reading the names and years of service for those who have recently announced their intent to retire, and we have a number of folks on that list tonight. I'll start with, and I haven't seen any of these folks here, I'm sure they're tuned in on live television, as I often say. They are Kathy Beatty, secretary at the high school, 15 years; Donna Coleman, paraprofessional, Gleason Lake, 30 years; Anne Goodmanson, secretary, district office, 29 years; Carla Thompson, principal, Plymouth Creek, 25 years; Shelley Nelson, director of curriculum and instructional services at our Educational Services Center, working in the district for 34 years; Margaret Wong, Culinary Express at Oakwood, 22 years; and Marshall, lateral teacher at Oakwood, 34 years. If you could join me in a round of applause for those folks. And in case I got to my closing comment before I acknowledged if any of them are here, I don't think they are, but if you are, please stand and be noticed. I really appreciate all of the contributions and all of the great work that those staff members have done for us. Our school district is really comprised of the historical assets that have worked in our district for a number of years, along with the new talent that we've welcomed in, and we appreciate their work so much. We also have a number of recognitions this evening for students and staff, and the next recognition is going to be for the awards and recognition for the recent production at Wayzata High School of Legally Blonde. And our director was unable to be here tonight, but I'd like to welcome Dennis Jocelyn forward, and any of the students who were performers with that, if you could, please join us up here by the podium as well. I'll share a few thoughts, and then I'll turn it over to Dennis to share any comments that he may wish to share, and if any of the kids have comments that they'd like to make tonight, you certainly can do that as well. So I'll read a few things, including the awards that this performance received this year, and then allow Dennis to introduce the students that are here tonight, or have them introduce themselves, and also, if you would, although I'm sure you're all very humble, if you would announce any awards that you may have received as well, because I know there were quite a number of them. So I'll share the following. Wayzata High School's production of Legally Blonde earns Spotlight Education Honors. Congratulations to the cast and crew of Wayzata High School's production of Legally Blonde for receiving the following Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Education Honors. The musical received outstanding in the categories of achievement in musical theater, overall production, overall performance, ensemble performance, dance performance, student orchestra, overall technical team, vocal performance, costume crew, light and sound crew. I don't know how many categories there that you didn't get, but that must be just about all of them, I would imagine. And as I indicated, there were a number of individual performers that received recognition, and I'll allow Dennis to comment a bit on that. But just in closing for my part, the Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Education recognizes students who participate and excel in high school musical theater and the program they perform in. The program provides an opportunity for students to network with students from across the metro area, receive constructive feedback for their production from professional evaluators, and gain valuable knowledge from the workshops available to them at the Spotlight Annual Conference. Students, and to all of those who aren't here tonight, we congratulate you and encourage you to keep up the great work. Dennis, if you would?
Congrats, and thank you. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening. I am Dennis Jocelyn, the auditorium manager for the district. One of my duties is that I get the pleasure of working with these fantastic people. The extracurricular theater program at Wayzata High School is second to none. Our director of theater, Sonia Gerber, sends her regards. She's almost back from her maternity leave, two more weeks. We're excited to have her back. Over 80 high school students participate in the cast, crew, and orchestra pit of this production. Over 80 students. This is not 80 students. We are also in the midst of putting on another production that opens Friday. You heard Matt Lawrence announce that a few minutes ago, Vanity Fair. Hope to see you all there. That production is taking up a large part of our cast and crew, and including our director, Grant Sorenson, of the production. Great. All of us are so blessed to be in a community that is so supportive of theater and the arts. We are quite proud of the achievements of all of our students. Though theater does not compete for state championships like other activities, our program is known across the state. The Spotlight Education Awards is the Hennepin Theater Trust's version of the Tony Awards for Minnesota High School Theater. Our students won an award in every single category. You can count the number of programs across the state that can claim that, on one hand. Ours is very elite in the state of Minnesota. I'd like to introduce all of our students. Actually, I'll have each of them say their name, if they will, please, and their role, and if they won any individual awards, please.
Um, excuse me, I'm Katie Mandelfeld. I played Ellen Woods, and I won Outstanding Achievement in a Leading Role. Please.
I'm George Claven, and I was part of the ensemble.
I'm Mark McNamara, I'm not one of the students.
And Katie Mandelfeld, would you like to speak, please?
Hi, I'm Katie. I agree with everything Dennis said. I think I can speak on behalf of all my peers that the theater program at Wayzata really does change our lives, and we're really grateful for everything that it offers to us. Spotlight is such a great opportunity, but I think even just, you know, the whole rehearsal process and performing with each other is really what makes it so special, and the bonds that we are able to create throughout the show. So, yeah, it's been really great being a part of this program for the last four years, so, yeah.
Any other students? No? That's okay. All right. These achievements are only possible due to the ongoing support of our great school board, and Scott Gengler and the high school administrative team, and also the strong foundations that our students learned in the middle school and elementary school in their acting, tech, orchestra programs, and the concept of play. Learning play helps people be people. Thank you to all of you for your ongoing support of the arts, and we'll see you at the next show.
Again, congratulations and keep up the great work. Our next recognition this evening is for Kimberly Lane Math Madness National Championship Team, and I spotted Sue Bradsher here, I think, right there. There she is. You were over there a little bit ago. I'd like to invite Sue forward, and I'll read a little bit about the recognition and all of our students that are here tonight. It looks like we have quite a contingent. As they're making their way toward the podium, Sue, congratulations. Always great to see you. Congratulations to the Kimberly Lane Math Madness Team on their recent national championship. The team, led by Sue Bradsher, gifted and talented coordinator and team coach, scored 43 points in the Division One Online Competition against Lake Norman Charter School in Huntersville, North Carolina. She will share a little bit more about the team and this incredible accomplishment, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Sue. Students, congratulations. That's fantastic. Unbelievable.
Board, Dr. Anderson, thank you for inviting us tonight. I am so proud of these students. They have worked really hard. This is a brand-new math competition. It's been offered at the middle school and high school level, and it's the first time that it's done at the elementary level. And I heard about it through our math intervention specialists, which I think is a very interesting piece, because it's a small world. So we started offering it on a Friday, and the kids were giving up some of their time to come work on the problems, and it's a wonderful competition, and it's set up very much like the NCAA basketball bracket, and it's a bracket tournament. So we did very well in our practice round, so we got a seed the first week, and then after that, we proceeded to go through until we got to the national competition. What I liked about the competition is it gave us immediate feedback. We were able to use that for instruction, to teach where our mistakes were, and how do we get better. We've been involved in a couple other different math competitions, but this is the first one that the kids are really super excited about, and I- And I love that we had the arts, and I love that we have the sports, but it's so cool that academics can get the same sort of recognition that sports and arts do. So at this time, I would like to recognize the students, and I'm going to have you guys come stand over here in front of the board. So I have Asrith Gandharavi. I have Amei Gandhakar. I have Amea Chathrari. I have Anika Das. Did I take a couple of extra pages? I have Anish Parachuri. Arnav Gupta. Beau Cowen. Caleb Slaven. Itash Das. Hanute Kumar. Ishan Iska. Kushi Shaw. Nick Kraut Kramer. Pranusha Uda Hai Kumar. Rohan Ganjendar. Shubham Panchal. And Anika, would you raise your hand? Anika Das was the number-one scorer in the entire competition, answering... I believe she had a ninety-three percent correct, meaning she outscored people at the all gifted school in Utah, several other people, and she's... Her average rate was like two minutes per question over all the course of the twelve weeks. So an outstanding performance. So I give you our mathletes.
Our next recognition this evening is for a staff member, and I would like to invite
Can I get some of your wisdom just from the... You know, just bring it on back. All right. Nice guys.
Ashley Farrington to please come forward to the podium.
And gals.
Yes. Women and men.
I'd like to share the following about Ashley Farrington named Minnesota's National Outstanding
Thank you.
Congrats. It's wonderful. It's really smiling. Okay, what's next?
Assistant Principal. Ashley Farrington, Assistant Principal at Central Middle School, has been named by the Minnesota Elementary Schools Principal Association, better known as MESA, as the Minnesota's 2020 National Association of Elementary School Principals National Outstanding Assistant Principal. The award honors assistant principals who are doing superb educational work in pre-K through eighth-grade schools. And I quote the following from MESA President-elect Jason Luxick. "It was clear that Ashley has gone above and beyond for his staff and his students. His passion for education stands out in both his accomplishments and his continued work he does each and every day. This honor is well-deserved, and he will serve MESA well by being recognized as Minnesota's National Outstanding Assistant Principal. Ashley will be recognized at the NAESP Annual Conference in July of 2020 in Louisville, Kentucky." Ashley, congratulations.
I'd first like to start off by thanking you, the school board, for all the work that you do for our kids every day. We really do appreciate it. We aren't able to do the things that we do without you guys, so thank you. I would also like to personally thank Superintendent Chase Anderson and our HR Director Stacy Voss for believing in me and allowing me an opportunity to lead. I learn from your leadership every day, and I am grateful for all that you do for our schools. Since 2011, I have worked with so many amazing people, and I have learned so much from so many throughout this district, and really, it's all of you who have helped shape me into the leader and educator that I am today. I'm going to do my best to get to all of the thank yous, but if I do miss anyone, please forgive me. Before I get into the thank yous, though, I want to share a story. I remember in 2011, I was twenty years old, graduating from St. John's, and I went to the job fair. And I went up to the Wayzata table, and our den superintendent... not superintendent, HR Director Annie Doty was standing at the desk, and she was like, "I don't know. We don't know about our numbers yet. It's still early, but I don't know." And so I was bummed out, because I'm like, "Man, I kind of want to work there. Those people are cool." And so I was driving back from the convention center in downtown Minneapolis to St. John's, and on the way back, I got this phone call, and little did I know, it was Annie Doty. I'm like, "I just talked to you like an hour ago." And she's like, "Well, actually, there is a principal, Liam Karen, and I think you should meet her. We don't know any numbers yet, but you should meet her and get to know her." And so she set up that meeting with her... with us. This was an unbelievable moment for me, because it began a life-changing journey for me. Little did I know, I would get my first teaching job to work with some of the best educators there are in Wayzata Public Schools. Most of all, I'll get to work with so many amazing students and families. And now, today, I stand before you, humbled and grateful for the past nine years in this district. From teacher to student support specialist, and now associate principal, I am blessed beyond measure. I am proud to have grown through this amazing organization. Now for those thank yous. So many, so again, please forgive me if I do forget. First of all, I'd like to thank Karen Kefler for this nomination and for being my mentor and role model since day one. At twenty-one years old, she believed in me and took a chance on me, a young boy from the Bahamas, and believed that I can do it. I am not the educated I am without you, Karen. I would also like to thank MSPO for this recognition. There are so many deserving assistant principals out there, so I do not take this award lightly. Also, I'd like to thank all my amazing teaching colleagues. From my first coworkers at Sunset Hill, to my fellow teachers at Meadow Ridge, there is no Mr. Farrington without each and every one of you. I thank you for the work that you do every day for our future. Thank you to Clark and the entire Central Middle School family. You all accepted me with open arms from day one, and I am so thankful for the last year and a half. This award is truly a recognition of your hard work and commitment to our students each and every day. I stand up here receiving this award, but really and truly, you all deserve this. We are... We know about all the growth of our school, the construction... yes, the construction, and all the other joys that middle school bring every day. But this never stops you from showing up every day and giving your best. I appreciate you, CMS. To all my students out there that I have worked with throughout the past nine years, thank you. Thank you so much. Many, many times, people think the credit should go to the teachers, but really, I want to salute our students. You have taught me so much and have made me into a better educator. I am honored to have worked with some of the best students and families throughout my time here. And last but not least, thank you to all my amazing family and friends. I'd especially like to thank my wife, Hillary, and my son, Lamont. This job is so demanding, and sometimes take me away from you guys, but there is no better joy than having you to come home every day. I love you guys so much. In closing, I hope that my recognition can serve as motivation for all those out there who have the odds stacked against them. Never in a million years did I think I would get to lead a school, but to be here doing what I love is something I am humbled by and forever grateful for. To my fellow educators, remember that each child, every day, is a glimmer of hope and is our future. It is our job to do whatever it takes to show them that they are special and important. I know that I am more motivated than ever to continue to do that and more for our future. The journey definitely continues, and I am so happy that I get to do what I love in this amazing school district. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your support.
Yeah. That hair is awesome. Ashley, again, congratulations. And Hillary and Lamont, thank you so much for being here tonight and for all your support. Ashley Farrington will truly be one of the greatest of all-time recipients of the award, and we look forward to your future accomplishments. Our next recognition tonight is for Employee of the Month. And I would like to invite Jolene Crowsey to please come forward. Meadow Ridge Elementary is pleased to nominate Jolene Crowsey as January's Wayzata Public Schools Employee of the Month. As our school social worker, Jolene utilizes her many talents to reach students, staff, and families to help meet the emotional and behavioral needs of our students. When asked to describe Jolene in one word, her colleagues shared the following adjectives: real, compassionate, empathetic, warm, creative, and fun. Jolene is real in all of her interactions. She is able to assess a situation, determine the need, and provide assistance. She has honest and thoughtful conversations about situations and can quickly get to the root of an issue. Her compassion and empathy puts people at ease. She listens with intent and asks the right questions. Her office is warm and welcoming. Both students and staff drop by her office for a moment of conversation and a chance to breathe in the calming essential oil that is being diffused into the air. When Meadow Ridge opened in 2016, Jolene helped students transition to their new surroundings. She did and continues to have check-ins in small groups with students to facilitate feelings of belonging and acceptance. Parents don't hesitate to reach out to her with questions. She provides nonjudgmental clarity and can recommend outside resources when appropriate. Jolene has supported Meadow Ridge during its times of greatest need. When there is a tragedy or crisis, she provides whatever is needed at that very moment and doesn't hesitate to begin meeting the needs of those around her. She truly knows the meaning of community, reaching beyond the school walls to build strong and lasting relationships. Jolene was and is instrumental in the success of Cardinal Club, the targeted services program. She assisted with the initial planning, small group lessons, and supports both academic and social-emotional learning. She works tirelessly, approaches situations thoughtfully and with great care. She says what needs to be said and does what needs to be done with the warmth we should all aspire to give. As a teammate, her candor has proved essential, and her laughter is contagious. She understands how stressful our jobs can be and the value of being able to find joy in the many aspects of our days together. We are so very grateful to have Jolene as part of our community. Congratulations.
Well, first of all, I just want to do a disclaimer that nobody should have to follow Ashley Farrington's speech. And I can say that because I worked with him. He's amazing. So congratulations, Ashley. But thank you to the board, and thank you to Dr. Anderson and all of the administration here at Wayzata Schools. This is my fifth year in Wayzata, and I feel more than fortunate to be here. I really want to make sure I take some time to thank Karen Kefler for all of her support. She took a chance on me as a newer social worker in the district and brought me on to help open Meadow Ridge, and I'm forever grateful for that experience. So thank you. Thank you to the amazing staff at Meadow Ridge and their continued support. I have a unique position where I get to go around the school and see some of the most amazing teachers, care about kids, and present lessons, not only the social-emotional stuff, but also the academic stuff, every day. So there's some pretty amazing people there. I also want to thank all of the office staff that really support me and just everybody at Meadow Ridge. When I meet new people, if the conversation comes up, someone might say, "Oh, what do you do for a living?" And I'll say, "I'm a social worker." "Oh." And then, "Where do you work?" "Oh, I'm in an elementary school." "Oh, gosh, well, that... Bless you, you know? That is such a hard job." And you know what it is? And there's been several nights where I can't sleep at night because I'm thinking of kids. Or just, you know, I care a lot about what happens there at that school. I take it really personally. But you know what? There's also a lot of joy there. There's a lot of great things that I get to be a part of because of my role there that other people might not get to. And so I'll leave with this story that might illustrate some of the joy and laughter that can happen. Just this fall, I was working with a kid, and they were asking me how old I was, and it was a second grader, and she kept prodding me, and I finally told her, and she said, "Mrs. Crowsey, you don't look any more than twenty-five." And I took that with me and told her that that was the best compliment I had had, like, in like six months. And so I was just feeling good all week. And then Friday afternoon, I was meeting with a fifth-grade student that I've known since Meadow Ridge opened. As... He was a second grader, and he's just done some amazing things for himself and had so much growth. And at the end, it was towards the end of the day, and I was meeting with him, and afterwards, he gave me a hug and said, "Have a good weekend, Mrs. Crowsey. And I don't know if I've ever told you, but you smell a lot like my grandma." So there's not a lot of jobs where you can go from being a twenty-five-year-old to a grandma in the same week. So thank you to everybody for giving me this opportunity, and just can't thank you enough.
I think that concludes our recognitions for the evening. Thanks for everybody being here. Those of you that were recognized, you're more than welcome to stay, but you're also allowed and welcome to leave and make a graceful exit, if you would like to, now. Have a good evening.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Next on our agenda is our student curriculum presentation, another highlight for our school board. Tonight, we're happy to have East Middle School presenting. Dr. Johnson, I'll turn it over to you to introduce the East Middle School team.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Welcome. Members of the board, Superintendent Anderson, I apologize. I don't have my graphic with me that I usually use on-site presentations, but the purpose of the site presentation is to highlight for you a practice that is occurring at the building level that will lead to the aspirations described in the strategic roadmap. Tonight's presentation focuses on that area of culture and primarily that of the staff, and we define that as creating opportunities for our staff to better understand themselves, their peers, our students, and our families. So tonight, to lead off the presentation... He was a second grader, and he's just done some amazing things for himself and had so much growth. And at the end, it was towards the end of the day, and I was meeting with him, and afterwards, he gave me a hug and said, "Have a good weekend, Mrs. Crowsey, and I don't know if I've ever told you, but you smell a lot like my grandma." So, there's not a lot of jobs where you can go from being a 25-year-old to a grandma in the same week. So, thank you to everybody for giving me this opportunity, and just can't thank you enough.
Thanks for everybody being here. Those of you that were recognized, you're more than welcome to stay, but you're also allowed and welcome to leave and make a graceful exit if you would like to, now. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. Next on our agenda is our student curriculum presentation, another highlight for our school board. Tonight, we're happy to have East Middle School presenting. Dr. Johnson, I'll turn it over to you to introduce the East Middle School team.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Welcome. Members of the board, Superintendent Anderson, I apologize, I don't have my graphic with me that I usually use on-site presentations, but the purpose of the site presentation is to highlight for you a practice that is occurring at the building level that will lead to the aspirations described in the strategic roadmap. Tonight's presentation focuses on that area of culture and primarily that of the staff. And we define that as creating opportunities for our staff to better understand themselves, their peers, our students, and our families. So, tonight, to lead off the presentation is the great principal at East Middle School, Mr. Paul Patesel. I'd like to welcome him to the podium, and he will introduce his team.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Superintendent Anderson, Chair Keane, and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to share with you some of the great practices that are occurring at East Middle School. Each year, we form a leadership team, and we look at all the practices that we are performing that align with the strategic roadmap. And then, we list the priorities for our site, the things that we think will make the biggest impact on the student experience. We have an emerging priority coming up through East right now, and that is the area of staff wellness. And so, we have had tremendous discussions about this concept, and we've had people step up and provide tremendous leadership in how we think about wellness and what are some practices that we can implement. So, I'm very pleased tonight to introduce you to Linnea Allen, who is going to talk through some of the things that we have done. So, I'll invite Linnea to the stage.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you so much to the board and Dr. Anderson for letting us share our staff wellness program with you today. I will start with providing a why for the absolute need of a program like this in the school setting. Next, I will share how it builds teacher capacity, how it impacts our students, and how we have designed our program at East in its pilot year, and finally, how we plan to sustain it within our building as we move forward. We are a proud, high-achieving district with high expectations for students and teachers Teaching is fulfilling but has many responsibilities. A teacher who fulfills many duties at work, such as being an advisor, a classroom teacher, a committee member on building leadership, one who does lunch duty, is at grade-level meetings, one who updates grades regularly, communicates with parents, manages a Canvas calendar, attends meetings, plans lessons, meets with students before or after school or during lunch for missing work or extra help, and even those who coach extracurriculars. These are all hats that a teacher wears. We cannot take away stress, but we can learn ways to manage our stress more effectively to be our best selves in the classroom. A teacher who has learned self-care when it's needed and how to prioritize themselves so they can be better for all others they will interact with in a day is one we are hoping to have in our classrooms. This will no doubt enhance the experience a student will receive in our classrooms as well as improve the climate and culture of a building. We are striving for both of those outcomes. When teachers are able to share in this learned skill, they become more connected to one another and therefore feel more belonging in the building. We are trying to shift from me to we. We know we have staff who exercise regularly before or after school and have other self-care habits, but this is a movement in our building that is not only about the individual but about what we can create as a community. A teacher who feels connected will be more present in the classroom. This is all about that feeling, the feeling one gets when they have multiple positive ties to their workplace as a place they do not link directly to stress, but rather to stress relief. A place that is nurturing, values their well-being, and makes them want to be there every single day. We want our teachers to do more than just show up. We want them to thrive. Speaking of attendance, East currently has the least amount of absences for teachers of all three middle schools. I'd like to say our wellness program had a lot to do with that. Teachers will feel more equipped to deal with classroom issues that may arise and have a calmer classroom. Modeling for students and sharing new knowledge, sharing a passion for self-care, discovering something new, those are the greatest gifts that we can give when we share with others around us. Now for the impact on students. Staff who are mindful or practice mindfulness are more aware of it and the need for it throughout the day in their own classrooms. Happiness with students and staff alike is increased when positive health-enhancing habits are formed. Students will have positive achievement and behavioral outcomes. The teaching of ideas to students as a coping strategy is also a positive. As mental health needs arise, we are able to help them lower their stress levels. Our strategic plan has five different areas where we focus our efforts for staff. They are exercise, mindfulness, nutrition, gratitude, and spark. We are trying to evolve from the comfort zone to the growth zone. We want our teachers to find purpose, to live out their dreams, to set new goals, to challenge themselves. We have been using three different platforms for our staff wellness. One is our staff wellness page on Canvas. We also have a forum on Facebook that we discuss health issues. And finally, our weekly staff bulletin. There's a quick list of reference to what has been offered thus far through staff surveys and facilitator interests. I'm really proud to say, looking at the picture above, that though we have some veteran staff members stepping up, we also have new staff members, first-year teachers, that are able and feel empowered by being able to contribute to this in a small way with a small-time commitment. I'm just going to go through a few pictures of our staff in action. The first pictures are showing the staff at weekly staff breakfast, a tradition that was longstanding long before I was even at East. So, this is a great time for us all to get together and gather weekly. This was a meal-prepping, portion-sizing session with Teri Bostrom, and some of the staff in that picture have continued to carry that idea throughout the school year so far, and it's awesome to see that transition and evolution for them. We've also had some community members step up. We've had outside groups such as burn boot camp or nine-round kickboxing come in to work with the staff. Staff who attend these places outside of the school day have been able to bring their passions in and share them with us. We're also very proud of the mindfulness room, meditation room, that is evolving at East, currently under construction, and we're making it better every day, and it is getting used multiple times a week with Martha Williams, our mindfulness expert, who you will meet later. We also have a collaboration room with walking treadmills where the staff can do PLC work. I find that it's used often, and people are loving going in there to grade, walk, and it gets them a little bit more motivated when they're taking that time out to be active while doing it. Teri Bostrom was featured in a few of the pictures that you just viewed. She is the Engineering Technology and Design Teacher at East. I would like to welcome Teri to speak about her experience in the wellness program as a facilitator this year. As she's speaking, I will play a video of one of her sessions in action.
Thanks, Linnea. Thank you for inviting me in and sharing my...I'm doing Spark. So, I had an awesome time teaching men and women how to do woodworking, and it's relaxing, it's fun. One of the things I really take away from it is...oh, here's a group right there. You guys can't see this, can you?
Yes.
Is what I like is, as they're finishing, the students are seeing what the teachers are doing and what I'm showing them how to do, and they're like, "Oh, my gosh, other people are doing this," and I find it exciting. And even as you get older, you do stuff like this. And I wasn't sure if you would see the pictures, so I brought in...this is one of the examples of something that we made, and this is on Velcro. So, you change it for the seasons, the holidays, whatever it is. And it was kind of funny. My meal prep class I did, I had probably eight to 10 people my first session that I did, and it kind of triggered down from there. My wooden class I did, I had 19 teachers sign up to do it. And we're still in the process of finishing them, but we're working on them, and I'm offering...oh, my gosh, I'm wearing the same outfit. Okay, sorry. Something a female would notice. I'm offering another session, and I'm hoping I get another group of people that are just as excited as I am to do it. And I also find meal prep and nutrition, one of my sparks also that I find really important, because I know as cutting down stress, meal prep really reduces your stress level. So, thank you.
Thank you, Teri. It's great to hear about what the program provides for those who are able to facilitate, and I appreciate you doing that. There's a little bit more footage for you, so I'm going to move on. Next, there's another staff member who is a new teacher at East, or I should say, staff member. He's in the office, and his name is Kern Wilson, and he's our school counselor. I wanted to get another perspective of a teacher who was new to the building, as Teri's been there for many years, because as Jill Johnson explained, this is all about culture, climate, and we know that when people feel connected and they have that sense of belonging, they're going to stick around. So, this is Kern Wilson.
So far this year with the wellness program, the things that I've done have been the tennis game matches in the morning. I've also did woodworking. Thank you for the past month, I've been doing that. Also, I did the staff breakfasts, and that's always cool to go to as well. Good food. So, with me being a new staff member and also a school counselor, I kind of have my own office that I'm in. So, with these different wellness programs, I'm able to kind of see teachers, you know, outside of the normal classroom day, in the normal daytime, not wearing that teacher hat, they're more being themselves. So, with me being able to do that kind of program, like whether it's playing tennis or woodworking stuff, you're able to see, you know, teachers kind of being themselves. And I feel like that's been able to...been better for me to kind of connect with them on a more personal level, than just going over their normal, like, everyday classwork or school stuff, so, yeah.
Thank you, Kern. Now, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Martha Williams. She is a district parent and mindfulness expert. Martha will give you a brief background on how she has utilized mindfulness to enhance teacher self-care at East, and she will also lead you in a quick demonstration of that practice. Martha has had approximately 129 visits over 17 weeks from our staff members.
You'll have to forgive me for that picture. I don't get very many opportunities to brag about that picture. But this is really a privilege to be able to do this for you. Thank you for asking me to be here. Paul, thank you for having an interest in our teachers' wellness. I have one child at Sunset Hill and another at the high school, and I'm very proud of them. My son is really involved in the fishing team and the mountain biking team, and those two things for sure tell me how unique this school district is. I've been teaching a yoga class weekly at Sunset Hill for the teachers, and I'll tell you, my main motivation is I just want to spend more time with them. You have so many great people working for you, so you're very lucky. This is really, really cool. I thought I was going to be leading a meditation for 100 people as I walked in here tonight. That was very intimidating. But it's just us, it's a small group. I promise it won't be more than three minutes. I promise to make this very quick and painless. Did you get the slide of the two links that I had? So, I know you don't need more data about meditation. It's very well-known how effective it is. Two studies I would look at, if you're interested, there's one by the Eco Institute, basically boils down 141 different ways in which yoga or meditation improves your life, and then the other is just looking up the benefits of yoga on Wikipedia. There are hundreds of articles on it. Two things I think that are important that you might notice as you practice this meditation, you do shift from a very different part of your brain when you meditate and do breathing exercises. It does change your brain long-term, and then it...we all know what the stress response does. Yoga is a relaxation response. Meditation is the same, except we're with a lot less effort. Also, if you have a good instructor, it really takes no infrastructure. It can be done exactly as you're seated right now with just you. So, very little supplies. I brought my chimes, but you don't have to really have anything except for yourself. So, sit up nice and straight, and this will be exciting, so you're going to want to sit on the edge of your seat. It will help your spine stay nice and straight. If you have a Kleenex close by, it's really nice of you to have Kleenex right here. I'm not going to make you cry, but you might want to have your sinuses clear for breathing. So, lift your chest, relax your shoulders down, and just bring your chin toward your chest and your ear toward your shoulder, and release any tension in your neck and shoulders if you have it. Roll your shoulders around, and then close your eyes. Basically, meditation is just a shift from doing to being. It's very simple. It takes you out of thinking and into a state of being. Sit up nice and straight and lift your chest, and drop your shoulders down again, and breathe slowly. In meditation, we don't criticize, we notice what is right. So, there's really no way to do this wrong, but there might be a way to do it a little bit better. So, take a deep breath and just notice how you take that deep breath. Two things you might notice that you can improve right away, your pants might be a little tight. You need to relax your stomach when you breathe. Deep breathing has done much better if you can relax your stomach. Most of the time, when people tell you to take a deep breath, you breathe in and you hold it, and you could accidentally stimulate a stress response by doing that. So, just notice, inhale deeply and exhale slowly. One of the things that is on the rise, especially in our middle schools, is anxiety, so I am going to teach you a very simple breathing exercise. Don't worry, everyone else has their eyes closed, but place your hand just in front of your face, and place your middle and index finger at the center of your forehead. Your ring finger will be used on the left side of your nose and your thumb on the right. Close the left side of your nose and inhale through your right. Inhale as deeply as you can, and then close both sides of your nose. Exhale through your left. Inhale again through your left. And hold, and exhale through your right. Inhale through your right. Exhale through your left. Relax your hands down, keep your eyes closed, just take a few breaths, and listen. So, welcome back. I hope you loved it. Thanks so much for having me, and I have to say one thing in parting. Superintendent Dr. Anderson, you are so very well-liked. Thank you. To imitate my son Rafe, when you're in their school, the kids run around and say, "He's here, he's here." You're a celebrity, so thank you. And then, I have one little yoga demonstration for you guys. It is a yoga posture known nowhere else than in the school district. It is a yoga posture known nowhere else than in the school district.
Thank you Martha, I feel like I need a nap now, but I'm sure you all do as well. Thank you for sharing your mindfulness practice with us, I hope you all enjoyed that. I'd like to close with a brief overview of how we plan to sustain wellness within our building. We collect ongoing participant feedback and facilitator interests. We are actively monitoring student behavior and student achievement over time. This is a pilot program that started in September, so we have a long way to go with looking at that. But the goal would be that student behavior is improving and student achievement is increasing as a result of a teacher who is their best self in the classroom. We tap into building climate and see and hope to feel that positive energy. We will be surveying the staff in the spring on this year's program. We're very excited to say that we have initiated a new wellness project team for next year. We continue to seek out opportunities that allow us to network with others on how to run a successful wellness program in the workplace. We are actively working to further our education on the power of a wellness program in the school setting. Finally, something that's very familiar to you, our district initiative for students ties directly to what we are trying to do for our staff. We believe that if a teacher feels that their social, emotional, physical, and mental health are being nurtured and valued, they will be more present, better prepared, and feel that sense of connection and belonging that everybody wants. Thank you again for inviting us to speak on behalf of East Middle School. We are so excited to share the wonderful things developing in our building. We appreciate how the district has embraced our staff wellness program in its pilot year. This year, we have been able to implement the program with grants outside the district using no taxpayer dollars. I want to extend my appreciation to Joanne Fieldseth, who has been supporting this movement in our building and has been ever so diligent about helping it progress in the right direction. We are very lucky to have support from other women from outside the district, including Rebecca Rudquist and Susan Bianchi, who are also on our wellness team, along with Martha Williams, who you just met. Finally, I want to thank Paul Patesel. Without his support, none of this could have happened. He is a leader who cares for his staff and it shows. Paul has gone above and beyond in conceptualizing how this program would work and continues to work hard to maintain its implementation in our building. His own philosophy and outlook on health and well-being has positively impacted the staff members, and we can only hope that it continues to trickle throughout the building as we move forward with next year's new wellness project team. Thank you Paul, Joanne, the board, Dr. Anderson, and the district for your belief in taking care of your teachers and staff, so they may feel valued and nurtured and be the best version of themselves when in the classroom, so our students may have the best experience in the classroom, and so the entire community may benefit overall. We know that our district believes in excellence for each and every student, but I am so grateful to work in a building that believes in excellence for each and every staff member as well. I'm now going to turn it over to Paul for any questions you might have about staff wellness at East. Thank you again for this opportunity to share with all of you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I wanna thank you for that great presentation, and I think that might be the very first time at a board meeting where I've shifted from doing to being, and I really liked it, so thank you. It was impressive and inspiring to hear about what you're doing for teacher wellness at East, and I'm sure my colleagues have some questions and comments about that.
Thank you.
Anyone? Sure, Chris.
How, how well has it been adopted and accepted? I mean, to me, when I hear this, I'm like, geez, who wouldn't wanna jump into this? And I don't know about the kickboxing one, or one that sounded scary, but, um, I mean, what's your thought? Is everybody all in on this, or still kinda in a pilot phase?
Our goal was to provide a variety of experiences and things that we're inviting to the staff, a number of them, like Terry has brought forth her ideas, and that has been very well-received. I participated in her meal planning class and it was fantastic. I'm now doing meditation on a regular basis, thanks to Martha, and our goal is really to expose all of us to, you know, different skills, different opportunities, and then we can choose to incorporate that into our, our lives. So I do think it's been well-received, not 100%, but it's, it's getting there.
Thanks.
Sarah.
I just have a comment, thank you for being here, and thank you Paul for your leadership in this. As you all know, I'm a parent at East, and so I, I see this a bit, and, and I can give two examples. One, I was there early one morning dropping one of my daughters off for some band event, and as I pulled around the back to drop her off, I saw a group of staff that were playing tennis on the tennis courts, and I saw another group of staff that were walking in, and then I pulled in the front to drop my other daughter off, and I saw another group of staff that were going out walking. And so it was just so exciting to see the staff, and they were engaged in conversation, and they were doing things, and you could just really see that impact. And then, and then my second story was, then my daughter, who's in eighth grade, was talking about how the eighth grade team was feeling pretty stressed out, and they were having conversations in their, in their core classes, and, and so she said then the next day, the teachers let us all in meditation. And then my seventh grader said, "Oh, that's why we did meditation, because then my teachers noticed we were stressed out and we did meditation too." So, um, I, I just want to thank you for, for the work that you're doing with our teachers, and from a very selfish point, for our students as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much for being here, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the administrative reports and recommendations. Looking at the agenda, I see that we don't have any superintendent reports, but we do have a number of school board policies to consider, so I will turn it over to our executive director of teaching and learning, Dr. Jill Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. In your board packet this evening are several policies and regulations for your consideration. The policies and regulations were reviewed using the Minnesota School Board Association model policy where available, by the teaching and learning department and other district stakeholders were necessary. A final review was completed by the policy committee of the school board. The changes for each of the policies and regulations are indicated by either an underline or strike-through notation. The recommended action is listed below.
All right, thank you, Dr. Johnson. The recommended action is to approve the listed policies as presented in the attachment. Those policies are Policy 501, Student Disability Nondiscrimination; Policy 502, Student Discipline; Policy 503, Compulsory Attendance; Policy 506, Student Dress Code; a new policy, which is yet to be numbered, which covers grading and assessment; Policy 512, Notification of Violent Behavior by Students; Policy 513, Hazing Prohibition; Policy 516, Search of Student Lockers, Desks, Personal Possessions, and Students Person; and last, Policy 519, Weapons. Could I get a motion to approve the listed policies as presented in the attachment?
Madam Chair, I move that we, um, we have first reading for Policy 519, and that the remaining list that you just enumerated would be first reading and second reading for final approval.
All right. Thank you Ms. Paulzine, could I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Sarah.
I have one question, just to, just to confirm, Dr. Johnson, that grading and assessment policy that doesn't have a number yet, would you review for the board just what that process is for assigning it a number and when we could expect that to happen?
The superintendent's assistant, Ashley Winter, and I will go through and look for an appropriate place of where to put that, and I think we're in the process of that, and it may involve the change of potentially one to three other policy numbers, just to get there in alignment. So we're looking, excuse me, looking for the best place for that right now, and we'll assign a number to it in the 500s, I believe, yes. It'll be a 500 series.
Great, thanks for that clarification. Any other points of discussion? I just wanted to make a quick comment, that this is a long list of policies. I wanna thank the, the policy committee for their work on this, and also, I think we can see by the number of policies that Dr. Johnson did a lot of work over the winter break, so thank you very much. Board members on the committee provide guidance and feedback and edits, but then it's really Dr. Johnson who does the bulk of the work, so we appreciate that, thanks. All right. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the listed policies as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, next we have three items to consider in finance and business, so I will turn it over to Jim Westrom.
Yes, good evening, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I was just gonna make a remark that you have a very busy January beginning. Tomorrow, as a matter of fact, we have a facility committee meeting of the board on Wednesday, we have a finance committee meeting of the board on Tuesday, and we also have our health and well-being committee, so it's really relevant that we saw a presentation tonight on health and well-being for our staff. As part of our strategic directions, we also have health and well-being of students, so we're excited to begin that work, that important work, beginning right away tomorrow. So the three items that we have before you are monthly financial reports, and approval of a revised budget, and then an authorization for me to execute some agreements. So the first item is, includes an investment summary, an analysis of financial reports, a statement of revenues, and a statement of expenditures for November 2019. And what I can share with you is that I typically meet with a treasurer and a finance committee of the board to review our finances, and nothing unusual was noted through November, so no action is required on your part, but I'd be happy to respond to any questions that may arise.
Thank you, Mr. Westrom. Are there any questions? All right, moving right along to your second item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The second item is a routine item that typically during our budget planning process, we go through and we look at the dollars that cross fiscal years. So our fiscal year goes from July 1st through June 30th, and you're probably aware that some of those activities that occur over the summer months actually need to be re-appropriated. So within your board packet, we're asking the board to re-appropriate some of the dollars that carried over from the previous year, and they were either required by statute or it made sense for some of those activities to cross fiscal years. I'll give you an example, we have about 10 weeks to do many of our construction projects, and we, although we hit it hard starting the last day of school, some of those projects actually are budgeted in the previous year and then completed in July and August, so as I mentioned, this is fairly routine. I did also put a handout before each board member's desk, and if you look at the top right-hand corner, you'll see a little color coding, you'll see that our general fund will be ending, is projected to end the fiscal year within the board policy, so actually we have a slight increase in our fund balance due to the fact that we sold some land and reimbursed ourselves that we had borrowed from ourselves several years ago. So without going into a lot of detail, which the board can be assured that we'll go into a lot of detail tomorrow with a committee of the board, the finance committee, the adopted revenues and expenditures are before you, and I'm asking the board to approve a revised revenue budget of $247,689,056, and expenditures of $262,618,540. And the primary reason why the expenditures exceed revenues is we are expending construction proceeds that were received in 2017 and approved by the voters. So the recommended action is before you.
Thank you for walking us through that information, Mr. Westrom.
Yes.
Colleagues, the recommended action before you is to approve the revised budget for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the revised budget for the 2019-2020 school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously, thank you. Our last item in this section is for the authorization of the executive director of finance and business to execute an amendment to license agreements with the city of Plymouth. I'll turn it back to Mr. Westrom.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As I mentioned earlier, we have a finance committee of the board, and we've discussed some finance items tonight. We also have a facilities committee of the board, and I just wanna share with you that the facility committee of the board actually met with the mayor from the city of Plymouth and a couple of the council members and staff to talk a little bit about our license agreements and extending those so that we can serve our community more effectively. So I'll just make a few remarks. The school district and the city of Plymouth approved the Oakwood Elementary School Site License Agreement Amendment at its September 24th, 2019 special school board meeting. All other license agreements are set to expire in 2020, although we do have one joint powers agreement that has expired, but we've been operating in good faith with that. And then also we have aquatic agreements that will be expiring in 2020 as well. So at that time, it was agreed that the district would seek to give careful consideration to expand, extend the expired or expiring agreements while being aware of the city's objectives and the district's needs. In November, the district administration determined that it was prudent to extend the agreements until October 31st, 2021. However, the aquatic agreements operate on the fiscal year from July 1st through June, so those would be extended to June 30th, 2021. The reason why we're extending these agreements is to facilitate the city's planning of scheduling these facilities and other items. The facility committee of the board met with the Plymouth mayor and other city council members and articulated the district's need for interim agreements to allow the district to further study as to how to best proceed to serve the stakeholders in future years. So the recommended action is before you, and I will be working closely with legal counsel to make sure that the wording is in good form.
Thank you, Mr. Westrom. The recommended action before us is to authorize the executive director of business and finance to execute an amendment to extend expiring agreements with the city of Plymouth to no later than October 31st, 2021. Is there a motion to that effect?
Aye, so moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Westrom? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of authorizing the executive director of business and finance to execute an amendment to extend expiring agreements with the city of Plymouth to no later than October 31st, 2021, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Thanks, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Westrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have no items under human resources, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is other board action, where we have three items. At the December 2nd, 2019 special organizational work session, the school board reviewed its committee structure. Individual board members indicated their interests, and the tentative list of committee assignments for 2020 is attached for board approval. This is an action item, and the recommended action is to approve the board committee structure for 2020 as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, it's important to note that much of the work that our school board does happens within our committee structure, and so it's valuable for the community to know that these committees, what these committees are, and who will be chairing them in 2020 if approved. So I will read the committee members and indicate the chair. For 2020 Board of Education Committees, we've got facilities development and long-range planning. The purpose of this committee is to oversee bond referendum and other capital projects, develop long-range plans for facilities development. The chair- The Chair of the Facilities Committee is Cheryl Polzin. Other committee members are Andrea Keen and Chris McCullough. Next committee is Finance and Business. The purpose of this committee is to provide guidance and support to the Finance Department, review the CFAC Agenda and serve as Board Representatives to the meetings, provide oversight through the OPEP Committee. The Chair of this committee is our Treasurer, Sarah Johansson. Other committee members include Andrea Keen and Linda Cohen. The next committee is Human Resources. The purpose is to offer support and guidance to the Executive Director of Human Resources, Stacy Boss. The Chair of HR is Andrea Keen. Other committee members are Bonita Lucky and Linda Cohen. Next, we have our Teaching and Learning Committee. Purpose is to review processes and long-range planning for educational recommendations, review and recommend changes to policies pertaining, pertaining to teaching and learning, meet and work with the Directors of Teaching and Learning and Curriculum and Instruction regarding educational issues, discuss technology, gifted and talented, equity, and QComp-related issues, hear academic achievement reports, and closely monitor efforts to close the achievement gap. The Chair of Teaching and Learning is Linda Cohen. Committee members include Andrea Keen and Sarah Johansson. Next, we have our Stakeholders' Relations Committee. The purpose is to support the communications and engagement team in connecting with the community through electronic and print publications, media relations, crisis communications, and other district initiatives. The Chair of Stakeholders' Relations is Bonita Lucky. Other members are Cheryl Polzin and Cian Falconer. Next, we have the Superintendent Evaluation and Compensation Committee. The purpose is to plan, facilitate, and document the annual Superintendent Review Process, including goal-setting, a mid-year check-in, and the annual end-of-year review. This committee will be chaired by Chris McCullough. Other committee members are Bonita Lucky and Cian Falconer. Next, we have our Policy and Regulation Review Committee. The purpose is to review district policies and make recommendations for revision, addition, or deletion as needed, consider and provide guidance on questions of policy or district regulation, maintain policy adherence to state and federal laws. The Chair of our Policy Committee will be Sarah Johansson and other committee members are Bonita Lucky and Linda Cohen. This year, we have a new Ad-Hoc Committee. It's our Health and Well-being Committee that Jim Westrom mentioned earlier. The purpose of the Health and Well-being Committee will be determined by the committee as they begin meeting and the members of the committee include Cian Falconer, Cheryl Polzin. The new Health and Well-being Ad-Hoc Committee will be chaired by Sarah Johansson. I would also like to mention that in 2020, we'll have several negotiating teams that will be assembled to cover the contracts with several of our important employee groups in the District, so I'd also like to mention those groups and the Aside Board Representative. This year for negotiation teams, we have home base. The Board Rep will be Cian Falconer and we also have principal, principal negotiations. The Board Rep will be Bonita Lucky. All right, that was a lot of discussion. Is there any other discussion before we approve? Anyone? All right. All those in favor of approving the proposed School Board Committee assignments for 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries and the proposed School Board structure for 2020 is approved. Thank you, everyone, for volunteering for the committees. All right, the next item is the Board Appointments for 2020. At the December 2nd, 2019 Organizational Work Session, the School Board reviewed the member appointments made to community and professional organizations. Individual Board Members indicated their interests and the tentative list of appointments for 2020 and it's attached for the Board Approval. Once again, I'd like to read through the list of appointments for our community. We've got the Association of Metro School Districts. Board Reps are Andrea Keen and Cheryl Polzin. Caring for Kids Initiative Through Great Expectations, Sarah Johansson. The Citizens Final, Citizens Financial Advisory Council, otherwise known as CFAC, Andrea Keen, Cheryl Polzin, and Sarah Johansson. Community Education Advisory Council, Chris McCullough. Curriculum Instruction and Technology Advisory Committee, Sarah Johansson. For our District Liaison Committee, the Board Rotates. Great Expectations Mental Health Committee, Andrea Keen and Linda Cohen. Intermediate District 287, Andrea Keen. Legislative Action Committee, Cheryl Polzin, Cian Falconer, and Andrea Keen. Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Service Unit, otherwise known as Metro XU, Andrea Keen. Minnesota School Board Association, Cheryl Polzin. Minnesota State High School League, Chris McCullough. Partners for Healthy Kids, Bonita Lucky. Partners in Prevention, Sarah Johansson. QComp, Linda Cohen. Wayzetta Education Fund, Cian Falconer. Thanks again to everyone on the Board for volunteering for those positions. The recommended action before you is to approve the proposed 2020 School Board Appointments as presented. Is there a motion?
Aye, so moved. Second.
Any discussion? I'll quickly add that the liaison role that the various School Board Members play in these District and Community Committees is a significant part of the work that we do as a Board. So thanks, everyone, for volunteering. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the proposed 2020 Board Appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Thanks, everybody. All right, our last action item in this section is consideration, consideration of School Board Member Compensation for 2020. I lost my place, hang on one second. I'll just read Dr. Anderson's, thank you. All right. In accordance with Board Policy 220, Board Member Compensation and Expense, the Wayzetta School Board must annually recommend a compensation plan. The Board recommends no changes for 2020 and the Board will continue to be compensated at the following yearly rates. School Board Directors, $4,700. School Board Chair, $5,500. In addition, for special meetings and work sessions scheduled on days other than regular meetings and work session days, compensation will continue at $50 paid to each attending Board Member. The recommended action is to approve the Board Compensation for 2020 as presented. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is Board Reports. Do we have any Board Reports tonight?
Madam Chair.
Cheryl?
I don't really have a full Board Report, but I wanted to mention that the Minnesota School Boards Association is having its Annual Leadership Conference this week and so I just wanted to mention, because all of those who are tuned in out there watching us might be interested to know that the MSBA does provide a lot of training opportunities for School Board Members, where School Board Members learn to lead. That's their tagline. So this week is full of workshops and roundtables and discussions and trainings and it's a lot of exciting things going on and we learn from each other and there's lots of presentations. Our Early Education Outreach Team is actually presenting at this year's Annual Conference, so that's exciting for Wayzetta Schools. Cian, you're going to be doing some training, so that's exciting. So I just wanted to mention that because this is the only state association that provides this conference at no registration fee because they go out and get sponsors and different things to raise the money to put on a great, great conference and there's no, like I said, registration fee for members to attend that and get professional development and training. So I think everybody's attending at least part of these offerings this week, so thank you for attending and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'm really looking forward to that. Any other Board Reports? All right, finally, I'll make a quick report. Also contained in tonight's consent agenda was our District's Legislative Action Committee platform. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the members of our LAC, the District Staff who support the LAC. Thank you, Andrew. All the stakeholders who contributed their input to the platform, to Cheryl Polzin, our LAC Board Rep to the LAC, and most of all, to our Citizen Chair, Annie McDaniel's, who worked tirelessly to get our platform ready for the 2020 Legislative Session, which begins on February 11th. After being approved this evening, the platform will be available on the District website shortly. All right. Anything else? All right, next on our agenda is the audience opportunity to address the Board. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board tonight? None? All right. Well, in that case, is there a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the Wayzetta School Board of Education Regular Meeting for January 13th, 2020, is adjourned.